Um, well, I have access to the building after graduation to set up.
Yeah, I mean, you should be here until five or six.
Because I have a feeling I'm gonna be running in and out back and forth. Also, do you feel like you are my ally?
I'm gonna stay overnight with the kids. They love this class, but I ain't staying overnight. Great kids.
Thank you, my love.
I was really happy. But also, usually I stop in.
Ten thirty is check.
Hey, thanks.
I can stop in and make sure you got a toilet.
Well, I am ready. That's first.
Yeah, we're short on volunteers from the one to the six AM.
It is.
And then I don't know how early, like, things have to be coming out.
You're up here, Anne Marie.
I'm sorry if you were probably making all the trouble. Well, I'm the night of my.
Oh, you're fine.
Yeah, I'm gonna. I'll be there all night, but.
Do you have that?
I think right now we have three volunteers.
Can I show you that piece of it?
We'll do an act time. Will you though? Will you?
It might be, yeah. Okay, and so anyway, I just was kind of like, to me, that's three, four, five, six, et cetera. And then I'm sure you were on the opposite side.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I have kindergarten.
Oh, there is.
He's hit. And this was.
I was like a. They all started passenger.
Oh, yeah.
Um, so they even went down in the.
Oh, did they?
That's what I'm calling it. I feel like it's flat. No, I said.
I was.
Like that. So, and I'll have to come off from there. Because someone's like. We have.
Look, I just saw you walk in. Walk out, come back in.
Yep.
Okay, so I don't lose interest. You on?
I had to.
Can I?
Trace the pictures.
Sign this yet? Is that me?
Yeah.
Can we sign it or something? Nice. So, the smart not you.
Yeah, you're on my way first.
Yes. No, I'm so, I'm busy.
He does, he does have a senior.
I know. One AM to six AM, your work has contributed so much.
I know, right? Like, have, uh.
What have you done?
I can't answer that question. I don't know. Why do you have to ask it like that? I don't like that. I don't like that.
That was good.
Why don't you just say, um, be there?
I, I was, I'm thinking about it.
Be fun.
Well, you don't have to say it like that.
Why don't the senior parents do it?
You don't have to say it'll be fun. It's not gonna be fun.
It should be the junior parents do it. I think we're gonna try to get away from that and just have senior parents.
Oh, it would be so automatic because then the senior parents are maybe having a party or whatever. The one AM to six AM is adult fun anyway. It may just know that, yeah.
Bouncing houses.
I, I would love to help out, but there's, I gotta pull the hammer.
Do you want a slipper or are you just gonna do it? You're gonna do it. Or I can use a slipper, either way. I had fun. Well, we have a panic, we started at zero hours.
And I was running those in charge of all those finances and all of my ropey stuff.
Oh, yeah.
I don't, but it was fun. I was there at the lackens for some start to end.
What's nice is it's been, it's been nice since we've still have the same with the parents. I feel like it's kind of the same.
Yeah, because they're good. The group that you have.
Oh, yeah.
All right.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Six, five.
Just work there.
I do. I do.
Right.
No, I, 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 yes, I do. I think about it, yeah. Okay, we're good to go. All right, please rise for the pledge. What do I do?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, folks, I'll be assuming the duties of calling until we establish offices for the meeting. So pledge allegiance with state and care of roll call. Anne Marie Anderson.
Here.
Courtney Kniefel.
Here.
Eric Ryan.
Here.
Jill Geske.
Here.
Brock Wright.
Here.
Joe Sanfilippo here. Brad Zeransky.
Here.
Ashley Goodman Mason will be joining us after the concert. Uh, Deb Burnett.
Here.
And John Goodman.
Here.
Megan Johnston.
Here.
And Evan Jingerberg. Public notice, public notice of this meeting and compliance with state statutes. Chapter nineteen eighty-four is posted at the elementary, middle school, and high school, post office, and Unity Bank. I'm looking for an approval of the agenda, please.
Motion.
A second. Courtney with the motion and Eric. Ryan.
Yes.
And, uh, Wright.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Geske.
Yes.
Kniefel.
Yes.
Uh, next meeting date, June twentieth, two thousand twenty-two, regular board meeting, July eighteenth, and August fifteenth. All regular board meetings at six PM. Uh, if you have any questions or concerns about that, please let us know and we'll. Anybody at this point? Okay. Student highlights, we are moving to the admin announcements area because we have a couple of students that would like to present, and they are at the concert right now. So we're hoping that they'll be finished with the concert by the time we get to the administrative announcements. And if not, I asked them if we could get them to come in June, and we probably are not gonna get them to come in June. So, we're, we're gonna see how it lands here over the course of the next couple of hours. We'll see how it goes, all right? So we are, at this point, we are looking to, uh, look at the board reorganization. As a district administrator, I'll preside over these proceedings until the board president is elected. And I would ask for a voice, a voice vote unless the board member requests a roll call vote or secret ballot are either of those requested at this point. Okay? So the election of officers will be as follows. Will be president, vice president, clerk, and treasurer. Right now, we are looking for, uh, a nomination for president, please.
I nominate Brock Wright. A second.
Motion was by Jill. And second was through Courtney for president Brock Wright. Any other nominations? Any other nominations? And any other nominations? Okay. Uh, oh, Wright.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Geske.
Yes.
Kniefel.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Motion carries Brock Wright has, will assume presidential roles, which also means taking over the agenda. How exciting is that?
Thanks.
Thank you very much. All right. All right. All right, we'll move on to, uh, vice president at this point. We'll open the floor for nominations for vice president.
I nominate Eric Ryan.
Any further nominations? Any further nominations? Any further nominations? Seeing none, proceed to roll call vote, please. Well, I gotta do. Right, Anderson. Geske.
Yes.
Kniefel.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Right, yes. Give him one. I'm so used to. All of a sudden, here it is. I'm so used to just be like, give up the role for one person. Okay. Now, once a clerk, are there any nominations for the clerk position?
I nominate Anne Marie. A second.
Any further nominations? Any further nominations? Any further nominations? Seeing none, roll call vote. Geske.
Yes.
Kniefel.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Wright, yes. Anderson.
Yes.
And now, if you don't mind taking over that portion, when we get to that, it'd be fabulous. All right, we'll move on to treasurer. Any nominations for treasurer?
I'll nominate Jill Geske. I'll second that.
Are there any further nominations? Any further nominations? Any further nominations? Seeing none, roll call vote, never, please, Anne Marie.
Kniefel.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Wright.
Yes.
Anderson, yes. Geske.
Yes.
All right, on to two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three board appointments, starting with the CISA ten representative for two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three. Last year, Brock assumed the role of our CISA ten representative. Essentially means asking you to go to one meeting a year and have conversations with the CISA ten board if those happen throughout the course of the year. Again, Mr. Wright was our board representative and Ms. Geske was the alternate. So if we have any nominations for that, looking for those at this time.
I would nominate Brock Wright again.
Yeah, I think he's good. I'll second.
We have an alternate before we, and, uh. Yeah, we'll need an alternate as well.
I can, Geske.
Okay. So Brock and Jill as our, as our nominees. Motion made by Eric.
Eric, yep. Seconded by Courtney. Roll call vote, never, please, Anne Marie.
Ryan.
Yes.
Wright.
Yes.
Anderson, yes. Geske.
Yes.
Kniefel.
Yes.
And on to the WASB delegate.
So, we're requesting, uh, that the board designate someone to, and an alternate for the, for the January eighteenth to twenty, twentieth, twenty, twenty-three education convention in Milwaukee. I really hope that this goes this year, that it's gonna be, um, not a virtual experience. And I really think if anybody's interested in actually attending, there's a, it's a, it's a really great opportunity for, for board members. Um, this Kniefel was able to do it last year, and, uh, Mr. Ryan was the alternate. It can be done by appoint, we can do it by appointment, but if we want to have somebody available, if somebody's thinking about going, this might be a great opportunity to do that. So I don't know if that's something that you're interested in.
I'd still like to nominate me going first.
I'll nominate Courtney Kniefel.
Do you have an alternate?
Did you wanna be alternate again?
Sure.
Here, cancel.
Okay.
You have a second?
I'll second.
Roll call vote, never, please, Anne Marie.
Wright.
Yes.
Anderson, yes. Geske.
Yes.
Kniefel, yes. Ryan.
All right, on to committees. And if it's possible, I'd like to make a suggestion for these. And that suggestion would be to leave everybody as is. And reason being, because I, I feel we got a lot, well, you probably agree, we've accomplished a lot in the last year or so, and I think that, uh, everyone's kind of on the same page with this group. So, I don't know if the way we can, if we have to write them all in, or if we can.
Can we just approve as?
Um, yeah, if you just do that motion to approve as.
To leave everybody as is.
Yeah. Approve as twenty twenty-one, twenty-two representatives?
That's okay with everybody. That's just a suggestion, that doesn't mean I have to do it, but I just wanted to.
I motion that.
Okay.
Okay.
Motion by Courtney. Seconded by Eric.
So this is for twenty-two, twenty-three?
Correct, yeah.
And would be to leave it the same as twenty-one, twenty-two.
Correct.
Roll call vote, never, please.
Anderson, yes. Geske.
Yes.
Kniefel, yes. Ryan.
Yes.
Wright.
Yes.
All right, on to general public address to the board. Seeing none, on to the consent agenda, which includes minutes of the regular board meeting held April eighteenth, minutes of executive session held April eighteenth, financial statements dated April two thousand twenty-two, approval of monthly receipts and checks, student activity accounts received some checks for April two thousand twenty-two, consideration of renewal of student accident and catastrophic insurance. And that would conclude everything on the consent agenda. At this point, we're looking for motion to approve the consent agenda as presented, please.
A motion.
Cross it.
Eric. Roll call vote, never, please, Anne Marie.
Geske.
Yes.
Kniefel, yes. Ryan.
Yes.
Wright.
Yes.
Anderson, yes.
All right, on to administrative reports and board actions, starting with business and finance.
Pages thirty-four to forty-four house our bi-monthly board report. There, we're tracking as expected. You can see current year compared to historicals. Next month, we will, or in, or for a July meeting, one of the two, we will have budget adjustments to bring as we do each year. But it nearly will be shifting dollars between not an adjustment to the overall. So last month, I, or last bi-monthly update, I had kind of teachable moment for you. And so I have one tonight as well. It links though to the budget that you'll be reviewing in a couple of agenda items. So for now, if you just take a look at the original budget column, only you can look on page thirty-four. And we're gonna focus on those on the left. For example, you see ten R two-one dash, and then you see ten R two-four dash. Do you see those account numbers and then the original budget numbers? So just keep those in mind, and I'm going to show you how we transition those into later budget documents, that they do connect. You probably have already noticed it, but just another opportunity for us to build on it. So as of this year, we're trending as expected. No surprises to report.
All right. Any questions? No questions, we'll move on to consideration of the resolution authorizing transfer of funds.
This one will be mine as well. This is, this is always an exciting one in the spring, or has been most recently. And just a reminder, this is actually the, the work of my teammate. I just present for on since I'm here. But at your seats was a summary document. And these are the final figures available after we send the. Okay, so just a reminder, the defeasance process is the prepayment on our referendum debt. So just like with our home mortgages, um, if we can repay or, or prepay early, it creates savings in interest. And we've been doing this with our referendum debt for years, and it's created savings. And this year's prepayment was originally estimated a week ago at, uh, three hundred and nineteen thousand dollars of interest savings. And remember, since this is related to our referendum approved debt, this is savings directly to the taxpayer because it's related to that debt. So it's really is dollars we don't have to levy later in order to repay the loan. And so although it was estimated at three hundred and nineteen thousand a week ago, one good thing about interest rates going up is our escrow will earn more. And so the actual savings came in at three hundred and twenty-seven thousand. So that's.
Excellent.
Interest avoidance that we'll have because of this process. So.
Direct saving to the taxpayer.
Direct saving.
To the taxpayer.
Yep.
And there's not penalties for paying off the loan early.
Correct. So the, the defeasance process, good question. If, if I can equate this to our home mortgages, so with our home mortgages, we really can prepay anytime. Municipal bonds are typically set up, and ours was set up in a similar way where you agree not to prepay for a period of time, and in exchange, they give you a lower interest rate. And so the way to work within those parameters is to put the money in an escrow account, and it gets it off your books, and that escrow account gains interest and then repays when the time is due. So that defeasance is a fancy way of saying escrow account to prepay. Got it?
Great opportunity for our community and thankful for all the people out there that put this together. And so please thank your team for all the work that they've done on that. So we truly appreciate it, and so do the taxpayers, so thank you.
All right, is there any questions regarding that? Do you have anything further? At this point, I'm looking for motion to approve the resolution authorizing the transfer of funds.
I'll make that motion in a second.
Jill and Courtney. Roll call vote, never, please.
Ryan.
Yes.
Wright.
Yes.
Anderson, yes. Geske.
Yes.
Kniefel.
Yes.
All right, on to consideration of the preliminary draft budget for twenty-two, twenty-three.
I have a brief presentation for you before I begin. Animation and all.
Nice.
Just in one spot. But, uh, just for you, your reference in the booklet, starting on page forty-seven is the draft budget document. And the teachable moment that I mentioned is, uh, if you look, for instance, and, and I have these marked like A twelve, if you follow that. Do you see how that says two-ten? And the one below it says two-forty? And the middle column says, uh, column C is our budget. You can match those numbers up exactly to the reports that we review on my bi-monthly basis. So the, the, we report to you in the same level of detail that you approve the budget in. And so I don't, maybe you realize that before, maybe you didn't, but that's an important thing that all those connect as we go. So today, we'll be looking at column D, which is our proposed budget for next year, which we know isn't final yet, but is a start for us to look from. So, um, just a real quick overview of our budget. Just remember that this is our preliminary budget, it's our first look. Our fiscal year runs July to June. And so we're a couple of months out from the start of fiscal year, which is hard to believe it's coming already. But this isn't our final budget. Our final numbers don't come in until October. And so we have a three-step process. We approve this now, and this really just kind of kickstarts our year. And then for our annual meeting, which is in September, we bring back to another budget in August, which has updated numbers based on hires that we know and all of, all of the additional pieces we have that we, then, that we don't have now. That gets approved, published in the paper, and goes to our annual meeting. And then come October, when we have the final numbers, that's when our district and all the districts across the state approve the levy and set the budget. So not final, but are our best estimates to date. So we'll continue to update you, and no surprises as we come through. So just a reminder, as we work through the document that's in your booklet, we use fund accounting. And fund accounting, people who like regular accounting don't like fund accounting. I learned fund accounting, so I'm not as, quite as good with regular. But essentially, we have buckets. Did you see that? You missed it? Okay, let me try it again.
There it is. There's my.
Okay. So each, thank you. There's more. So anyway, um, so essentially, each fund or bucket classifies our expenditures. So in your budget adoption format, we have our general fund, which is our fund ten, our main operations. We have our special education fund, which is our bucket for all of our special education costs. We have our referendum debt fund, which is our fund that repays our referendum approved debt. And so what the fund is, is just that area of dollars that we're working in. Then within that, we have revenues and expenditures. And of course, that differentiates, uh, you know, is it revenue coming into us, or is it an expense we need to pay out? And then finally, in your booklet, how they're classified is the who. Who's giving us the money? Or who are, what are we, um, who are we paying it for? So in the case of our sources, that would be our revenue. Is it coming from the federal government? Is it coming locally, coming from the state? And then in terms of expenditures, that's, is it going for instruction? Is it going for support services, or is it going for others? So as we look at the document, the, that you approve, it actually subdivides it very clearly in these fashions. So for this year, we are budgeting within the funds here, two force, two, four, six, seven funds here. We no longer have fund, if, we no longer have fund sixty, but seventy-three is also budgeted, but according to DPI and the GAZBEE accounting guidelines, it's not included in there. But we do use the fund seventy-three portion. The main two funds are our general fund and our special education fund. That's where a majority of our expenditures go, and that's actually where the most detail is reflected in your documents as well. We do have other accounts. Our old booster club accounts, activity accounts are in fund twenty-one. We talked about our referendum approved debt, that's repaying the loan for our referendum projects. Fund forty-six is where we're saving for the long-term facility needs. Remember last month, we talked about that, what, ten-year plan? Last year, we budgeted for fund forty-nine, which was the end of our referendum projects. Those dollars have been fully spent on those, spent on those projects, so that's no longer included here. Fund fifty is our food service and fund eighty is our community service. Our community service isn't a very active fund, but it doesn't include, for example, the fobs that, the purchase of the fobs that get community members into the fitness center. We focus on fund ten, it's the biggest portion of our budget, it's where most of the activity occurs. What's most important is we have a balanced budget for you, we've been forecasting that, it's not a surprise. At high level, we pulled out most of the COVID-specific expenditures. There are a couple that still remain. For instance, we added time for our nurse throughout the pandemic, and those needs stay until that, those costs are included, we've been forecasting that. But most of those pandemic-specific costs have been able to come out. It does not include a bus, bus purchase for next year. Um, it does still include staffing estimates. We have some hires still coming through and will, so we've entered estimates where we need to for those, and we will update as we know for sure. And then we do have some SR three fund, SR three funds budgeted. We talked about the reading curriculum and such. So some of those are included, but not all of the dollars are budgeted, as we will be looking to use those later. Uh, for revenues, just a reminder that from a state level in the biennial budget, the two key ways that we get our revenue, revenue limit and per people categorical aid, the state sets zero to increase for people. And because we've been planning long-term, we're fine, other districts are struggling. The budget does include that variable. And then the biggest other, for us especially, is our open enrollment estimates. It is still an estimate, and, but, and we will continue to update that. But we are, we do so well with open enrollment. We have so many families who don't live here who want to send their children here. So that's actually where we saw open revenue, uh, and needed when the state had zero, per people, for the revenue limit, per people categorical aid. So just to give you an idea of where our general fund revenues come from, a majority of it is coming from the state revenue limit calculation and the state per people categorical aid. So nearly eighty percent is dictated by that formula. And just remember that the variables for those don't come in until, are final, until September and October. So that's why we're saying it's still preliminary, even though our budget starts in another month, or month and a half. Open enrollment is, is key for us. Like I said, we do very well with that in terms of families wanting to come. And then we have small slivers in state, other state federal aids and other as well. But just, this just reminds me how important the state formulas are in open enrollment to us. On the expenditure side, this will match up with your document as well. Over ninety percent of our budget is, um, spent on instruction and support for instruction. So we're targeting our dollars towards servicing our kids, whether it's directly the teachers in the classroom or the supports, for instance, a guidance counselor or something. This does include the fund twenty-seven transfer, um, so if fund, if the special education fund isn't made whole on its own, which none in the state are, we, that instruction is counted here as well as a cost. So this isn't reflective in your budget document, but I think it's an important data point. It's just some, it's just kind of cross-sectioning the data in a different way. This is cross-sectioning it, what we call by object. And really, that, what's important to me in this is that we're sent, that we're spending the majority of the district's dollars on the people who service our students each day. We do have other costs like utilities and services. We do pay, make payments to other school districts for our students. We do pay, make payments to other school districts for our students, open enrollment. And we have others, but the important part is we're spending our dollars on the people who service our kids. So just a few other notable items. Our special education fund, Fund Twenty-Seven, we do have to use about six hundred thousand dollars of our general fund budget to make that whole each year. The state does not provide enough funding to, to fill our special education bucket. Fund Thirty-Nine is where we're repaying our loan. We do aim to manage the debt with the levy and the levy with the debt. So each time we can prepay, like we approved tonight, we actually generate more tax savings from equalization aid and it provides more tax savings in itself to the taxpayers. So that long-term strategy is beneficial. Fund Forty-Six is our fund to save to maintain our facilities. Remember that that's where our cushion came this year, why other, some other districts struggled, because we had that transfer, we were able to, to reduce that. So this budget includes only a forty thousand dollar transfer, where this year we were able to put about three hundred thousand in it, based on budget. So that's where our cushion came. And then Fund Seventy-three is not in your booklet, but just a reminder that that pays our early retiree and is self-sustaining. So a lot of good things that the district has done to look to today to put us in a better position than many other districts that I work with when I'm not here. So in summary, there are several key variables that we need in order to make this final. The state variables will come on their dictated schedule as per statutes. We won't get some of the key revenue limit ones until October. Even some of the grant allocations, we don't find out for sure until summer, we're still working on estimates. And then for those formulas and for our budget, we also need things such as our student count, which happens in September, and then open enrollment and staffing. So a lot of unknowns, but we have made the best estimates where we can to date. Any thoughts or questions on that? Did I explain that okay?
Yes, thank you very much.
Thank you. We spent a lot of work that's gone into that.
All right, if there are no questions, looking for a motion to approve the twenty-two, twenty-three preliminary draft budget as presented, please.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
We'll vote whenever you're ready.
Ray?
Yes.
Anderson, yes, Geske?
Yes.
Kniefel?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Right, on the consideration of an audit contract with Whitley.
I just have a couple more for you. Fifty, fifty-one to sixty-three is our proposed audit contract with, with Whitley. Just a reminder that we're required to have an annual audit, which I think is great. And Whitley has done it for years, they do a nice job and like to continue working with them this year.
I agree. Looks like the cost is similar to what it's been?
Yes.
Right, any questions, comments, concerns? Okay, and a motion to approve the audit contract with Whitley as presented.
I'll second it.
We'll vote whenever you're ready, please, Henry.
Anderson, yes, Geske?
Yes.
Kniefel?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Onto consideration of an RW Baird contract for business management services.
So we are going to, we'd like the board to approve continued contract services with RW Baird for business management, which is Debbie's time here with us. She does a fantastic job and we want to continue that relationship with the school district.
They also look similar.
Yep.
Okay, at this point, we're looking for a motion to approve the Baird contract as presented, please.
I'll make the motion. I'll second it.
We'll vote whenever you're ready, please, Henry.
Ryan?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Anderson, yes, Geske?
Yes.
Kniefel?
Yes.
Sorry, not going anywhere. It's over, locked in. Let's get, no, let's keep, keep running through that one real quick.
Ryan, you have that animation.
It's not, it's not in the contract. For continuous success. Thank you very much, we appreciate that.
All right, onto consideration of approving a therapy service agreement for twenty-two, twenty-three.
So we are, we are looking for new occupational therapy services as our current practitioner is moving on. So we interviewed BRC Therapy Services, OT Services, and we'd like to approve their contract, as, their contract for the two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three school year.
What did we add before?
Is that functions, that wasn't functions was the name of it. And did a nice job.
This, the fee quoted in here matches the fee that we were paying to.
All right, any questions? Now looking for a motion to approve the OT service contract with BRC as presented, please.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
We'll vote whenever you're ready, please, Henry.
Ray?
Yes.
Anderson, yes, Geske?
Yes.
Kniefel?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Right, on the consideration of the Chartwell contract renewal.
So we used Chartwells for a number of years and on page seventy-four through seventy-eight, you'll see the contract for their services this year. And we would like to, we've, during the, in the review circuit, we are in the renewal cycle, we're in the fourth year of that. We would like to continue our relationship with Chartwells and having Val run that process for us would be in, in the best interest of the district, we believe.
With Chartwells, do they determine what kind of food is provided to the students?
They, they provide the menu items and they're the choice selection that, that then Val brings in.
Expectantly regulated, though, what they can be.
I was gonna say, I know, you know, our lunches are, I mean, they, they check all the boxes.
Correct.
But I was just wondering if, like, there's an opportunity for us to, like, have somebody else and see if they offer a different type of menu or is that menu kind of just a stagnant menu that's kind of across the board at all schools?
When we went to look at different programs, they were very similar in terms of what was being provided. Yeah. The service that we give with Chartwells is fantastic.
There are different packages you can choose from.
Correct.
You know, depending on what level you want to pay.
And how much you.
And that raises the lunches for the students.
Absolutely.
For your families, yeah.
Which is what we'll talk about in a little bit, just in terms of numbers, so. Good question.
Good question, yeah. Any further questions? If not, looking for a motion to approve Chartwell, Chartwell's contract for two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three school year, please.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
We'll vote whenever you're ready, please, Henry.
Anderson, yes, Geske?
Yes.
Kniefel?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Onto consideration of the school breakfast and lunch prices for twenty-two, twenty-three.
I apologize if these had to be a handout, your seats are too handouts related to this. There was one district in the cluster that because meals were free this year, they didn't have their lunch prices out there and I was hoping to include them in the comparison and we even reached out to them and they didn't contact us back. So they were just omitted from this. But just to, Joel will talk a little bit about our recommendation, but just to explain how these two work. These are consistent with what you've seen in the past. The, the first one without the graphs, it's just a summary of the rates that we charge for breakfast and lunch. And remember last year, even though we had these prices in place, all of the meals were free to our students as were the year before due to the pandemic. And that was a federal thing with the reimbursement. So another reminder with this, it's, man, it probably was ten years ago now, time goes so fast, but the federal government implemented this PLE tool and honestly, I don't even remember, can't tell you what it stands for anymore, but they started dictating whether or not we needed to raise our prices, do you recall that? So the last few years, we have met the requirement so that we didn't have to increase prices and we chose not to. This year again, we met the requirement so that we do not have to. So that's good, it leaves a discretion up to us. So then the second handout here, the ones with the colors, and I wouldn't normally use color, sorry, John. But I do think the color is helpful in communicating these outputs. Only twenty-four, John, only twenty-four copies. So the, the top one relates to breakfast and it shows us compared to our cluster schools. And how you can read it is anything in red, those would be prices that are higher than what we charge and anything in green would be lower. And same with the graph down below, any bar that you see above the middle, that means they charge more than we do for breakfast, which for breakfast is a majority of districts. And then any below would mean that they would charge less and that same data is, is held true for lunch. So if you can look at this and generalize, we charge less than the cluster for breakfast and we charge more than the cluster for lunch, it's easy read. So all that data was important as we came to you tonight with the, the recommendation for lunch prices.
As, as we look into next year, just to, you know, seeing where people are at and where everything's at, you know, from a society standpoint, I think our recommendation at this point is to not increase anything at all at this point. We could raise the, the breakfast prices to be more in line with where people are at, just, I mean, but I wouldn't at all advise adding to the lunch prices. But our recommendation as an administrative team is to keep everything the same for the year and then make a decision based on where everybody's at next year, to be real honest, so.
I think this is gonna be an adjustment year because we're, according, now we have to charge again. They've taken away the, the free lunches from the central level. So I think it's, it's two things, one, families readjusting in a time where costs have risen. And then I also think it's, it's the determining then, what does that mean for our program? Do all the students continue eating because they appreciate it now or do some families adjust because now they're having to pay? So if we can, if you're comfortable with that, I think, and your family would appreciate that as well.
We're looking at no, no increase in, for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year, that would be our recommendation.
A motion that.
So we have to actually put the prices in there for the motion or am I just saying it's no increase?
Same as twenty-two, twenty-one.
Just put, okay, so the motion is to have no increase, leaving the same as twenty-two.
Twenty-one, twenty-two, I'm sorry, yep.
That's our motion.
That was made by Courtney.
Yep.
I'll second it.
Jill, we'll vote whenever you're ready, please.
And it goes without saying that we'll do our best to get the free and reduced info for those families that maybe will choose to take advantage of it.
If we have students that have a negative lunch account, are these, is there an opportunity for us to make sure that they still get them? Like, I mean, is there, does that work?
Absolutely, and we make every effort to, to, to make sure that we can get those accounts paid the best that we can. If there's hardship there, sometimes it's hardship, sometimes it's just don't want it at that point. We gotta have both, they're two different conversations, but we'll always make sure that kids get food.
I'm guilty of that.
In a way. I got you, I got you. Yes, that's right.
Can you please make a lunch account, okay.
So yeah, we, we, we want to make sure the kids are fed and we'll do everything that we can to make sure they're.
Sounds good, thank you.
Yeah, absolutely.
I was to my time too, but that's when my kids were having breakfast. And I didn't know where they were doing.
Right.
When they had breakfast available at home and they just got up too late to eat it. Lovely.
Right, so we have motion by Courtney, seconded by Jill. Anything further? Not one for Roqueville, please.
Geske?
Yes.
Kniefel?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Anderson, yes.
Are we gonna do a bus bid? Okay, so consideration of awarding a bus bid.
Yes, so if you recall, we have not followed our normal bus rotation cycle just because we've had such a hard time finding drivers and we're concerned about the longevity of maintaining our own fleet and, and such. We're to the point where we want to make sure though, that we keep good, sound buses on the road and such. So with the federal dollars available, federal dollars don't buy buses, but they allow us to claim other costs so that we can free up dollars to buy a bus. It is a time to add a bus to our rotation, take two out because of our reduced routes. And in the future, should we ever need to switch to contracted, they would correct, add it in. So we, in preparation for this, in order for it to be counted as a this-year expense, it needs to be used this year. So we wanted to have our information ready, just in case. And so we, we would like to move forward with this with your approval. We can bring a budget adjustment next, next month, which will just move the dollars. But with your approval tonight, they can get the bus here and in use to check all the boxes that are needed. So we're gonna take two buses out, bring a new one in and we will still not be breaking budget. Correct, correct. And, yes, and where you can see that back in the year-to-date is on page thirty-four, ten R seven eight dash.
I had one question on the two trade-ins, so one was a thousand and one was fifteen hundred for the two buses.
That's terrible. Can you maybe bring it into like a document?
Well, so I called today to check on scrap prices.
I was gonna say, scrap prices are really high, so.
Yeah, you can get anywhere between a hundred and thirty-five to a hundred and fifty dollars a ton. Those buses are about ten ton, so the one bus we would make more by scrapping at the trade-in. And I don't know about the other, obviously the other bus is probably a wash. But I just can't believe we can't negotiate that with that, where we're like, we can get scrap prices same as what you're getting for traded, you're gonna refurbish and turn ourselves into another busing company.
Do you want us to pull that off? We definitely can look into that.
Or.
We, historically, we, we've traded them, but that doesn't mean we have to. If we scrap it, do we have to take it apart?
I don't think so, no.
We just.
Why don't we look into it?
I'm just, I'm just, I just think that's ridiculous.
Tires and the hazardous stuff.
I think the last one really got about eight hundred, but scrap prices weren't where they were today either, so.
And I do know, like, the Cadillac murders, you know, the pricing of them, but these are all pre-two thousand eight. So starting two thousand eight, they changed the regulations, so if we have a bus moving forward, you know, those Cadillac murders are worth hundreds, if not close to a thousand dollars. And I'm just taking that off, now the bus isn't holding a separate price. So, you know, that's plus high, maybe you might want to consider that. You know, like making the Cadillac buses are more, not a deal.
Yeah, absolutely. We, we're not tied into just trading an end all, you know, absolutely do that.
No, you can just scrap it though.
Yeah.
I don't want to lose money though either because, for no reason.
Right.
We can do that with the, the current situation then, that we get with the two buses, we could like, we could look into that piece.
Absolutely.
Okay, so we'll do that.
So we can still approve it, we'll, we'll just do the hundred and seven and then if we end up getting reimbursed, like that's, it'll just be reflected over there differently? Correct, okay, correct. And then we can report back to the board as to.
I think Brian, like, we'll get to see if, like, the wood bus people are interested in anything and maybe they would buy it for twenty-five hundred, I mean, I don't.
We've, we've had people interested, yeah, but we haven't, we haven't actively sought out opportunities for that. And we can absolutely do that, we'll look at both, we'll look at the scrap.
So it's posted on Marketplace?
No, Brian, I don't want to see it.
Uh, yeah, I just, I, I feel, I, I'm kind of hesitant to put it out there as, you know, I mean, I'm just kind of hesitant to put out there at this point, but at the same time, if we can, I think the first choice for us in regard to this conversation would be to scrap it. And if we can't get that, then if, if we know people are interested, we can do that. But let's, let's take a look at both of those options and then we'll report back to you.
I feel like we've had this conversation, we've been a little bit concerned about selling it outright to a community member and then having some whole part on it and then it's kind of like.
They have our school district done it and they.
And then they're mad at us and we get.
Right, I think just having a bus out there with our, with our name on it and, I mean, you can take it off, but what if they don't? I mean, it's like, yeah, so we'll, we'll take a look at all options then.
Oh, yeah.
Appreciate that.
It's good to look at the top dollar we can get.
So the, the motion would be to award the bus bid, but at the hundred and seven, five twenty-five, pending anything that we could get extra than what they're going here for trade-in. Okay, all right?
Tree says that, I'll pay one. So you're just saying you're without the trade-in.
Without the trade-in, yeah. So then just, yeah, they can just report back to us.
Without trade-in.
Yeah.
Awarded a bus.
What if, what if we decide that trade-in is about?
At least give a scrap price for trade-in, so it's, and then you can still do whatever you want with it, but it's still a value for us.
Okay.
So could we do a motion where we're giving the administration discretion if a trade-in is better to go that route versus, after the research has gone down versus scrapping, et cetera? Can we do that?
I think your, I think your best bet honestly is to just approve, approve it at the one oh seven, five twenty-five and just, you know,
We'll give what we can get.
And then we'll get what we can get on the other side of it. If we can't, then, then the only thing that we're, how is it twenty-five hundred, then we'll just report back to the board, then we can do something else with it if we can. Does that make sense? So, we're, we're looking for a motion to award the bus, bus bid
Yep.
to Midstate Truck Service at one oh seven, five twenty-five. Is that right? Is that how we wanna do that?
Yep, yep.
Okay.
I'll motion.
We have a motion, is there a second?
A second.
Rook, I wanna be ready please, Emery.
Knichael?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Anderson, yes. Geski?
Yes.
Thank you.
Wasn't the previous bus having, was it like eighty-eight or ninety?
Yeah.
So that hasn't gone as crazy as like a lot of other car prices has, but it's still up there.
Right.
It, it's funny, I, I thought that was crazy, so it's interesting in that perspective, but, but.
It's more.
It's more.
Yeah, it's more, yeah, but not like through the, but, but same with all the other prices.
Okay.
Wait, it's not anymore.
Not anymore.
Not anymore, not anymore, never mind.
All right, and a consideration of awarding a pole pit. All right, Brad. All right, we are near replacing the pole pit out here, so we got a couple bids. Uh, Ritchie Athletics is substantially less than our other quote, we have a particular value, so we're looking at, um, proving that, um, basically they, once we say yes, they can deliver here and get it set up for us, so, um, the recommendation would be to go with Ritchie Athletics for our pole.
We have money in the budget for that?
That says athletic budget.
We take care of it.
I was gonna say, 'cause track and field, they do fundraisers and I suppose they have money in their budget for it, huh?
Good. Is there any, any questions regarding that?
Does that include doing anything with the, the pole, pole, I don't know what you call it, but.
The pole?
The ones they use.
Yeah, they, yeah, so. Yeah, plant.
They would do the whole, yeah.
Maybe, or is that just the equipment?
These pad. It's fully installed, isn't it, like the whole?
Well, it says whole pit. Or is that?
Yeah, that's the landing.
If you look on the back of page ninety.
But we have that resurfaced.
We got page ninety-one.
Four years ago.
Four, minus five.
Yeah, so they do.
So I don't know that, but I don't, if that has to be changed or updated or any condition on that, but.
I think that was, I think it would still be in, in, in line with where they're at, but if it's, if it's not looking like that, we can certainly have, and we can, we can adjust that just outside of us, that would be something that we could do.
And there's a poll here, Ryan.
Right. And if there are no further questions, for motion to award the pole pit bid to Ritchie.
Can I have the motion? I'll second it.
Rook, I'll vote in everybody please, Emery.
Ryan?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Anderson, yes. Geski?
Yes.
Knichael?
Yes.
On to policy and legislation.
So Courtney and Brock and I met regarding some language in all of our, in the policies that are listed in here. This is the first reading, the biggest components that we did, if you look at pages ninety-eight to one oh five, we're just making sure that, um, we were consistent in the language when it comes to the principal, I'm sorry, the superintendent or their designate and, and, and go from there, but we're just cleaning up some language there. We cleaned up all the font and the spacing in the document as well, but those are the biggest pieces of, of those components. The other thing that we took a look at were solidifying the substitute teacher, uh, and, and aide, um, rates to, to be in line with where we have them this year and continue that, so it wouldn't be a, an additional stipend, it would just be part of the overall subpay. So if you wanna take a look at those and bring those, any changes, concerns to me or to Teresa or to Courtney or Brock prior to the next meeting, we would appreciate it.
Can I ask one question?
Yep.
Um, the policy on gate receipts and admissions?
Uh, page?
Number one oh two.
Okay.
Can you just explain briefly what our process is and who our designees or who handles our money, et cetera? How that happens from the night of the event to somebody in the office depositing it?
Sure, so we have, um, ticket takers that are, come in, count all the money out, put it in the deposit, we actually deposit that night, put it into, and then it gets put into our accounts from there. And then Rhonda goes back and forth and gets the deposit slips and things to make sure that everything balances up, so it's.
So at the end of the night, it goes from there to the Falkirk Bank?
Yeah, to the bank.
Okay, and the.
Are you talking about, you were talking about the concession?
The gate, their concessions, the, you know, money, whether it's in the football area or in the basketball area or volleyball area, whatever, just how, what that process is, and I, I only asked because there was some embezzlement in another school and I just was kind of curious, like, what are our processes and do we have more than one person checking, so it's, et cetera.
Yeah, there's, it, for the, cause, for the, like, the gate receipts, there's two ticket takers matched up. Supervisor's also involved, make sure that everything's there and then it gets deposited from there. Concession stand situation is a little bit different because it's not directly related, so, um, I, I.
We do the same thing now.
Yeah, and it's not the school.
Yeah, it's the booster.
They're two different entities to you, so, yeah, the gate receipts are different than concessions, correct?
But we do the same thing with the concessions, it's two people, numbers and concept, and another person signs off on it. And then there's a closer that takes it and that goes up, we use the booster for that, like.
Uh, no.
Booster contract?
Oh, yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
To you.
But the closer usually always takes.
I mean, not to me specifically, but in our, our school account.
Wait, that's exactly what I'm talking about.
Can't we just start a contract?
Yeah, we do, that's right, that's right.
That's why she loves working here so well.
Not part of the contract, that's right, that's right, yeah. So, yeah, so there's always this, uh, uh, another party or multiple parties involved in that process, good question.
I, I, well, I knew we had a process in place, but I just, for the last few years, I haven't even thought about it. I thought, well, as long as we're looking at the policies, I just wanna make sure that was clear to everybody.
Correct, yeah.
Yeah, the only thing I would add is years ago, we implemented the, the two, two count and sign sheet. So even in the example of the ticket takers, they each count their own box and then the other person counts the corresponding box and they have to sign off that they, they did the double, so, and the supervisors there. So, we, we wanted to implement something before we had issues so that we could prevent issues.
Good. It's a good question. Any further questions? All right. All right, moving on to planning, which is summer school update.
So we have, summer school numbers are coming in, uh, we have, we're not in, at the, uh, place that we would like to be when it comes to recruiting teachers to be in that spot, to be really honest, uh, but we're hoping to get at least two more teachers, we're, um, to help out at summer school. So anybody knows any, any recent graduates that are interested in becoming part of the program, uh, we would love to have them and I can send out any information that you would need for that. We're also going to recheck with the, um, with the universities to make sure that, uh, they have all the information that they need and maybe we can get some graduates from them as well. So, we'll keep going with that. All right, more, more account as we move forward in terms of numbers.
And then on to the summer projects update.
I talked with Brian Holman today just to make sure we got our, our list ready for you. Um, in, in my eyes, it's not a, a super active summer, but, uh, some, um, some things just for you to note. Um, there's some fen, the fencing over here, the backstop for the, the kiddos area, um, it's gotten kind of beat up and balls are slipping through, so he has that section of fence scheduled to be repaired. At the same time, he's going to get a quote for the perimeter around the football field and the, the baseball fields and such, not for work to be done, but there are some sections that need repair so that next summer, we have some numbers to plan for. Uh, the bleachers in the high school gym, they're looking to fix the, the wheels on those so they roll in and out easier and then make platforms so it's easier for attendees to climb the bleachers and get to their spots. So not an overhaul of the bleachers, they're good, but making them a little bit more accessible. The softball infield, making sure that that has the, this is where my terminology is gonna be wrong. Dirt layer?
Yeah, yes, the, yes, the infield next on the top is gone.
It's gone and so that will be layered up and done appropriately. The wood chips need some, so as you can see, they are real big projects, we can see them a lot exterior. He said a, a big interior one that he's going to get a quote on is the middle school gym, it takes kind of a beating, that's where baseballs and softballs get hit, so repainting it would freshen it up. And that would be something that, they hired that out last time and it worked best with our staffing levels and such, so getting a quote for that. And then the last thing he was gonna get a, a quote for was not resurfacing the parking lot, but, um, filling the cracks, making sure that the moisture doesn't get underneath so that it lasts longest. So, some projects on, on the agenda that are important, not, not earthmoving, but important to do.
Perfect.
I actually was gonna just mention that I got a phone call from somebody that asked me, I, this was a weird month for phone calls. The curtain, I believe in the high school gym, because of the poor, you know, cold temperatures, something about they were throwing the discus into the curtain and the curtain was in quite bad shape. Are you familiar with anything like that and is that something that can be cleaned or?
I, I would say it's, there's marks on it, I, it, but it's usable, I mean, it's, it's not in bad shape, it's, so we're looking to see if we can clean it.
And so then this particular parent said, maybe the team that did that could clean it as their community service project, and I went, that's not my area, but I'll pass it on, so it's been passed.
Very good.
Thank you.
All right. Any further questions? Comments, concerns? All right, seeing, we're gonna move on to consideration of open enrollment applications for twenty-two, twenty-three.
If you take a look at the, the handout in your, that you have in front of you, open enrollment application update, we did have to update one, um, one additional piece in terms of open enrollment, as, as you, as we indicated earlier, open enrollment is a big part of what we do here and, um, if we can provide programming for a student, then, uh, we wanna make sure that, that, that we can do that. If we can't, then we do have to deny the open enrollment and if they go beyond the number that we have, um, that we have allotted for particular grade levels, uh, so we don't have to add staff with that, then we wanna make sure that, that those would be denied as well. So, the motion is to approve all incoming and outgoing open enrollment applications except the following incoming applications, twenty-three dash zero four, and, and there, there's three of them that you can see, um, all indicated, those, those are individuals, but because of confidentiality, we don't print any, but those are the numbers. So we would ask the board to approve all incoming and outgoing open enrollment applications except those three individuals. And the reason is we do not have the programming available for those three individuals. We would have to add our own, we would have to add staff.
Good. Looking for that motion, please.
I'll motion.
Courtney? You have a second?
I'll second.
Further questions? Scott, Rook, I'll vote in everybody please, Emery.
Ray?
Yes.
Anderson, yes. Geski?
Yes.
Knichael?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
All right, on to, do you wanna do the?
Yeah, we'll go right away, we'll go middle, middle school, correct, question, right, yeah.
So, yeah, so I'd like to, tonight we have two wonderful young ladies here that are gonna help us out, um, and talk about our eighth grade career exploration, our project-based ordering, so, um, Ms. Welby kind of asked me to help find some businesses this, this spring and, um, Ellie Schroder and Lauren O'Neil are gonna talk about this, um, and their experience and, and where they've, where they've traveled. I mean, they're, we're so lucky, I, I, the future's great here at Falkirk High School, I hate to see them leave. And they're, they probably can't wait to leave middle school, but, uh, I call, they're eight point nine graders right now 'cause they're just about ready to ninth grade, but they've been great, so lucky and they're gonna be outstanding as well, so, you have the floor.
Okay.
Absolutely, absolutely, thank you.
Um, we are presenting that, oh, the eighth grade career exploration PDL field trips, um, which is a series of field trips we've been going on to help us think about our future careers.
Each student goes on four of the six field trips and takes a day to work on a project that we talk about a career that we very enjoy.
Two thirds of the field trips.
I don't know, four field trips. There are six field trips, everybody goes on four of those, okay, three days, huh? Both, right?
Yeah, we're both great.
Okay.
Um, this was when we went to a nursing home to see how everything functioned there, um, and like, to see if we potentially wanted to be in a, a career that might be around medical or like assisted living. And this is when we went to a fire station, um, to see law and public safety careers, um, not just like fire safety, but like policemen and lawyers, um, anything in that field.
And I went on this one, this was when we, or I did not go on this one, you went on this one.
I actually did not, I will take footage. Uh, this is when people went to go see more about the medical field and, um, see if that was a career they wanted to pursue. Yeah, but that's for.
I went on this one, um, this was J and D manufacturing, we learned about, um, some agriculture things, design, um, working with heavy metals and, um, marketing and things like that to see if any students would like to pursue a career in that field. And we went to Chippewa Valley Home Builders Association where we met, um, people that gave us tours of homes that they were building for, I think it's, it's like a home parade or something, I don't know exactly.
No, she don't.
Um, but they showed us how they build them, plumbing, um, kind of how you pick a lot and just for students who would like to pursue a career in maybe electrical or plumbing or building, anything like that. Um, these were the people that gave us tours and things like that, um, yeah.
Um, and this field trip, we will actually go through on there tomorrow, um, we are going to win technologies, um, and learning about graphic design and stuff like that in those fields. And thank you, Mr. Goodman, for organizing all of this.
Mr. Goodman just put that in at the end, it's all about.
I should've made a flash.
You're right.
Yes, even, I can teach you how.
Well, we truly appreciate, uh, you coming and talking about it. What was, what's the best, what was the best part of, of the opportunity to see different things?
Um, I think getting like a first-hand experience in like careers you might want to pursue, to see if you really, like, would like it or wouldn't.
I got to see, I never thought that I'd be interested in a career with building fans, but I thought that it was pretty interesting and, um, I got to learn a lot, even though I might not pursue a career in that, I thought it was very interesting.
Good.
And I will say all the businesses, when I reached out to them, they were super, super excited, um, they, um, this was covered a lot. I think one of the connections with the workforce and our education, sometimes the business world feels like we're disjointed, um, and they were super excited to have, have the students come and show what they're doing, uh, from J and D, from the Chippewa Valley Home Builders Association, showing the trades and all the things that are involved. It's not just being a, a roofer, but the marketing, the drafting, the engineering, that's all. the marketing, the drafting, the engineering, that's all, that all goes into this, and, um, there's a lot of neat things there. Grace Home was ex- super excited, and then the wind technology, you know, if you're ever, winds will be exciting tomorrow, there'll be some graphics, but it's it's like a James Bond movie, you know, you roll in there, there's like a hundred TVs around and there you monitor all the local internet traffic in the region, so all of our local telcos run funnel through the wind network. They bought Globe University, but they used, they sit down in Vandberry, um, but they're kind of an unknown company that a lot of people don't know about, um, you know, basically your home internet travels through wind, they're a big provider of internet, so.
We'll see you tomorrow. Yeah, that's good. Enjoy, thank you so much.
I'd like to sign up for that one.
Me too.
Just saying, I, I could do that one.
That's what I can do, I'll, I'll call, I know God, we're good, all right. Fantastic.
All right, thank you.
So, Ashley's up for school literacy and the science of reading kind of together, they kind of touch each other.
So we just, last week had our audit with Schools Cube, and we actually had the owner of the company came in, so it was exciting, she's had just a ton of experience in literacy, um, and she gave us some hard and fast things that we can do now to really make an impact on our literacy in our elementary. So that is a big push and a big direction we're looking at with a possible update curriculum, um, coming up in the next spring and just, it was eye-opening, just little things that she saw with an outside eye that we see every day, but she's looking for a specific thing, so, um, we'll talk more with that with the, um, the curriculum committee, they'll give you more specifics of what we learned, and then we'll come back with that to preserve. Another thing, science of reading, um, we are doing a pretty massive training in our elementary, it'll end up being forty-eight total hours of PD for our staff in the end, and we're actually gonna start that, um, on March, or May twenty-seventh, and just getting the understanding of the science of reading and, um, just building that background knowledge, so then we're gonna into roll into next year with really learning all the different components of what makes a reader and how students actually learn to read. Oh, and I know one more.
Yep.
Can I go to the next one?
Yes.
So, um, we shared this with the curriculum committee, too, we have all of our resources and textbooks, um, in order of when they were purchased or actually the copyright date of that, so we have some that are in need of updating, um, our oldest one is from nineteen ninety-six, there's parts of that textbook that are used, so we have to go ahead to start looking at updating some of our resources, um, it might not be a textbook, because there's a lot of other good things out there than just a textbook now, so really, it'll be social studies in the high school, middle school, and then, um, reading, or, like, English in the high school and some middle school, too. So we'll start trying to get some things updated and get on a pattern, on a cycle of updating our resources for students and teachers.
Excellent, thank you. Thank you very much. On to Mr. Strats.
All right, uh, first one's athletics update, so, uh, middle school track is is wrapped up already, so we have one taken care of in this kind of tournament season here, so I'm just gonna give you some dates, um, and I can email it to you, too, just, uh, so you kind of know what's going on with different sports. Regional track, uh, is at Monrovia Monday, the twenty-third, so next week is kind of the beginning of everything. Regional golf is at Spring Pines on the twenty-fourth, softball is regional here on the twenty-fourth. Um, and then baseball starts on the twenty-sixth, they'll be at Lacrosse Logan that that night, and, um, real soccer starts on the thirty-first, so it's kind of like the first round of playoffs, and obviously the problems will occur for each of the teams. Uh, we also are going to move our athletic code meeting back to traditionally where we've done it, so it'll be on May twenty-fifth, uh, at seven o'clock, so we can get everything rolling ahead of time for the for the fall seasons. Last year, we had, because we didn't know what capacities and stuff, we ended up doing that, we got August first, which made things a little, turn a little quicker for us, so we're glad to do that, um, um, in the high school gym. And then the other thing that I had done was graduation plans, I just wanted to to let you know everything is kind of back to traditional, so it'll be in the gym, um, slideshow for the students, uh, senior slideshow and spotlights and and everything that we kind of couldn't do when we were outside. Um, and then, of course, we don't have to worry about the weather, I don't have to look at the head cast, but it's much shit up for Saturday, uh, so I think the kids are excited. And the thing that's nice about this year and an environment where you can do some really neat things, and so it's great that we're back in the gym. And the backup plan, if we can't go outside to shake hands, we'll be in the middle school gym for the receiving line, other than that, we should be good.
So that was.
Any questions?
Well, if it's raining outside, we will probably go in the middle school gym to kind of have the, like, the receiving line or graduation of the graduates, otherwise we'll go outside.
Okay. What time do we need to be there?
You can just, uh, that's up to you.
He's in, he's in an outdoor.
Oh, you guys will, uh, you know, fifteen minutes ahead of time is fine, um, I should really come and check things out, but at, uh, twelve forty-five, we'll kind of get you towards the back, like, the two entrances by the, by the counter, I don't know, what kind of ticket, one open, one closed, what kind of, full rock.
So to show them high school class?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I think, uh.
It'll be, it'll be fun, it'll be fun, it'll be really fun.
Hey, if my kid walks across that, he's.
They drove good.
I would want to close things over there.
Uh, yeah.
They're the home.
No, I don't know what my life is like.
That's right.
Oh, yeah.
It's cool. Yeah, I'm lucky. Too many bits to give Jen, but I got to give Jesse.
Jesse's drum, yeah.
It's cool.
With all my kids, yeah, done my nieces and nephews and this, and I, there's a strong possibility was. Was I here? Yep. And did I?
You understand.
I I felt like I did myself. Not dating myself. She's a new girl.
That's very excellent, that's fantastic, I love it. Good.
All right, another teacher appreciation week.
Oh, we had a great teacher appreciation week, and one of the cool things about teacher appreciation week is that we, not that we appreciate everybody, uh, everybody leads, everybody teaches in some capacity here, so we made sure that we celebrated our staff across the board and gave away some gift cards, did a, did the snack cart, we sent notes home to all of our staff members, we sent notes home, uh, and gift cards to our substitute teachers, so I thought that was really cool. We have, I have more, uh, emails and notes from substitute teachers in the last couple of days, I thought that was really cool. They just, they reached out, said thank you for appreciating us and, you know, um, so every other year, we try, we try to also get a list of all of our alumni who are teaching or working in a school somewhere, and we're gonna, we'll, you know, send them, uh, some stuff and we'll do that again next year, so, so we're on the off year for that. Yeah, great, great opportunity.
Anything further, any questions? If not, looking for a motion that could be into executive session for chapter nineteen eighty-five, one CE has got statutes for approximately seven eleven.
Please, Ben, I'll shoot.
One second.
Roll call one of your ideas, please, Henry.
Anderson, yes. Geske?
Yes.
Kniefel?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes. We are in full session.